Regular council meeting in order. Would everybody please stand for a moment of silence? And let's remember someone that this town lost who was an outstanding person. The athletic director for Bristol High School, a teacher, a friend, my cousin. And this town really lost a great person this weekend. Just for the public, the viewing will be Friday night at the Gals Around a Funeral Home in Levittown. And there'll be a funeral will be Friday, Saturday morning. And there'll be a reception in Bristol High School gym following. So let's have a moment of silence for Greg Pennelli. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for its innocence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Mr. Dillon, you want to do roll call, please? Uh, Mr. Gerard.
Present.
Mr. Ricchio.
Present.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Peasant.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Robrikis is on vacation. Mr. Catroci.
Present.
Mr. D Giuseppe.
Here.
Okay, we have a couple people we'd like to recognize this evening. First and foremost is a gentleman who put 62 years of service as a volunteer fireman for this town and sacrificed his life for a lot of people going into burning buildings and doing whatever he can for the residents of Bristol Borough. And at this time, I'd like to call him and his family up. And the mayor is going to present you with a proclamation. So at this time, do you want to come up? Carmen. Anybody want to come up with Carmen?
I'm very fortunate to have known Carmen probably for 50 of those 62 years. Matter of fact, we had a meeting today about the storm. And Chief Slack and Merle Winslow and I were recounting some of our old days. Matter of fact, I don't know if you remember the railroad station that used to be across the street when that burned down?
Yes.
I told him, I said, "I remember Carmen on number two's ladder truck, driving number two's ladder truck and Kenny Orr and Bill Frake." So it goes all the way back to the 60s. So the council and the mayor of Borough would like to present to Carmen Valenti for his 62 years of service as a volunteer fireman in Bristol Borough. And we have this beautiful plaque that we'd like to present to you. Anything?
It's a long time.
That's what you call true dedication, that's for sure.
You're not active anymore.
Huh? Hey, you did your time.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Carmen.
What you call dedication, 62 years.
Thank you.
And we have a... Thank you. We have a proclamation that Mr. Catroci would like to read regarding Don West.
Presented by Borough Council and Mayor of the historic Borough, Bristol Borough, Bucks County. Donald Don West, an extraordinary Borough resident, environmentalist, WWII, United States Marine. Presented by, at the Borough Hall on today, the 13th of March, signed by Mayor Joe Jackson and President Council, Ralph D. Giuseppe. And I just want to add, we live in a time where there's hundreds of thousands of agencies and foundations and even government organizations that work on things like the environment. And here's a man that, just a quiet giant, he did this after he retired as a metallurgical engineer. He went ahead and worked on the environment in places like Silver Lake, Grundy Foundation, right here in our own lagoon, lagoon here, the Marsh Project. And he did it, and he did it on his own time and out of his own pocket. He didn't ask for anything. He was just a kind of a plug along. So I think it's good for us to recognize someone who, he did it tree by tree in square foot of marsh area. And he did a commendable job, and he passed away at 92 years old. So that's it. Maybe we should all get out and work in the marsh area a little more. So again, we're going to present this to his family, but I think it's good that the Borough recognized his accomplishments here in town. Thank you.
Okay. And we have Stacy here from Bristol Borough Little League. And Lorraine Cullen wants to present you with a set of a proclamation, a check. Stacy, you want to come up?
Stacey, I want to thank you for everything that you do for our Little League. I kind of know a little bit about Little League because my husband did it for years, and he was either not home or I was there helping him. And I know, and he is still doing it. But it's a tireless effort, but when you see the kids and the fun that they're having, it's worth it. And we really want to thank you. Here's a $3,000 check. And would you like to say a few things?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, so much for this. We're working towards a few different projects at Little League at this point. We're working towards getting new sound systems put in. So this will go towards a portion of that. And we're also doing a couple different fundraisers. Our batting cages have been put in years and years and years ago, so they're kind of in disarray. So we're doing a home run derby, March 25th. Yes, I'm plugging it, sorry. It is $10 a person, and all the money raised for that will go to gut the batting cages, put new astroturf down, new netting, new pads, and new home plates inside. So this is absolutely wonderful. Thank you all so very, very much. We really, really appreciate it. Opening day is April 8th. We invite everyone to come out, join us on the field, say a few words, please. The kids like to see that everyone is there for them. And I'm kind of seeing that a lot on Facebook these days. I go, "No one's there for the kids." I know all of you are there for the kids. I've talked to all of you, I've spoken to all of you, I've emailed you. I know you support them. But faces do matter, so please, opening day is April 8th at 11:00 a.m. Come on out, show them that, you know, that they're cared about and they're there, you're there for them. Say a few words. Grandparents, parents, everyone, please join us.
Is registration over?
Registration has been extended Saturday and Sunday. Saturday will be 10 to 1:00, Sunday will be 12 to 3:00. When we close the doors at 3:00 p.m. on Sunday, Facebook and my telephone immediately started. Oh my gosh, I forgot to register my child. So right away, we went on, we talked about it, we extended it two more days. We're working with two different uniform companies this year. Ann does our local stuff, and we're starting with a new one to get a little more sports gear involved. So we were worried about the time constraint and it shortened registration, but they reassured us that everything will be fine, and we're extending it for the two more days. So again, Saturday, 10 to 1:00, Sunday, 12 to 3:00, at the press box on Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
People don't realize how much goes into running Little League. And again, Stacy, I want to thank you and your family because I know from years ago with your dad, how much time he put in and still putting in. So on behalf of Borough Council, I want to thank you. Okay, we're going to open up public participation. So anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Go to the podium and state her name. Merle, can we shut that door? I don't know, it sounds like a lot of people out there. Yeah, it stays.
Again, Stacy Dragon with Bristol Borough Little League. I just want to kind of clarify a few things because social media puts things out there, and it's not always the entire story. We've been hit with, "Why is it $110 a child? Why is it this? Why is it that?" So I'm going to explain just a little bit, kind of breeze over why things are the way they are. Out of the nine leagues in District 21, we are the cheapest. We are the lowest cost. The first child is $110. Every additional child is 60. So when you're looking at the big picture, someone's going, "Oh my gosh, they're bringing in $38,700." That's not true. We have, last year, 352 children in the program and brought in about $24,000. Our operating expenses for the last two years have been over $29,000, which we try and make up in fundraisers, donation from our council. So we're not trying to overdo, we're not trying to not let anyone play. If someone comes to us and says, "I don't have the funds for that," we find a way to make it work. We got an email from our police department that they're looking to sponsor some children. But irregardless, we make it work. We find a way to make sure those kids play if they come to us and let us know. For every child that signs up, if they pay $110, they get 55 $2 raffle tickets to sell. They keep that cash, they turn in the raffle tickets, they have their money back. It just requires a little bit of work on the parent's part. We've even said, "Okay, you don't have it? Come to us, we'll give you the raffle tickets in advance. You sell them and bring us the cash back. If they can't do that, okay, great, your kid's still playing." We work it out somehow because everyone has something in their life that maybe they can't do it that year. You know, "We'll get it next year, but we couldn't do it this year." So I wanted to explain that part of it. Now, this one is like Groundhog's Day. I feel like I'm in that movie with, you know...
Chevy Chase.
Exactly.
Bill Murray.
Bill Murray. Thank you. Bill Murray and Amy MacDowell.
That's right, sorry.
Every year, every year it comes up. Every year, no one addresses it with us physically, but it comes up. And it's out there, and people argue back and forth on Facebook. I'm going to make it 100% clear as to why. There is a program called RBI Baseball in this area. It is reviving baseball in inner cities. It is a program that is stated is free for all children. They provide a hat, they provide a shirt, they provide some equipment. We've looked into this program, we've looked into it thoroughly. It doesn't meet the needs for our Borough children, it just doesn't. If it did, trust me, I'd be here and I'd be saying, "Let's take a better look at this." It doesn't provide equipment for all of the teams. So if you have, say, 10 children or 10 teams in T-ball, it doesn't provide 10 Ts. Where does that money come from? It doesn't pay your electric bill, it doesn't pay for umpires, it doesn't pay for additional baseballs and softballs. It is also a starter program. So it's a non-competitive program where our girls, if you've seen in the past 20, 30 years, we've sent two teams to the World Series. We're competitive, but we're also a learning league. And then the biggest picture of all is there are no teams, zero, in RBI Baseball in Lower Bucks County or Bucks County. There's none. So for your child to play at zero cost, you have to understand, you're going to get into your car, you're going to drive an average of 14 to 32 miles into Philadelphia, Delaware, or Camden County. So I just want to clarify why, when we look at this program as a big picture, why we stay with Little League. And that's why we do what we do. It's for the best interest of the children. It isn't about politics, it isn't about liking a person or not liking a person, it's the big picture. This program works for the kids in this borough and for their families. I'm lucky enough to work from home, but some parents don't get home till 5:00. Now you have to be in Philadelphia 31 miles away by 5:30 to have your child play a 6:00 p.m. game. It's practically impossible. So there's the big picture. I just wanted to get it out there in the open to everyone and understand, this is why the program doesn't work.
Let me ask, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was going to ask a question.
Can I just ask you a question? I was involved 17 years in Little League. You guys buy the catcher's equipment?
We buy catcher's equipment.
Buy helmets?
We, well, we keep helmets with the teams, but unfortunately, not unfortunately, due to head laces, we let the parents know when they come in. We suggest you buy your own helmet. But we do have, every coach has at least four or access to four helmets at all times.
And you pay for umpires and all?
We pay for umpires. They ranged in the past three, two years, between $3,000 and $6,000 for umpires.
So I mean, because you're taking in money doesn't mean it's all 100% profit. You have to make it up through a concession stand.
Exactly.
The electric is very high.
Right. And like I said, our operating costs in two years, the average was over $29,000 cost. That would be our charter, District 21 fees, which is the nine leagues that we belong to, uniforms, equipment, which is softball, catcher's gear, catcher's mitts, first aid kits, ice packs on the grand scale, our electric bill, the umpires, any kind of maintenance to the fields that the Borough doesn't cover. We just had to, the batting cage end in the building, the kids had thrown some rocks through the top of it, so we had a contractor come out, he boarded it up, he recided it for us, little things like that that it's easier for us just to get them done than to come to you guys and say, "Hey, listen, we have something we need, you know, or we'll put it out for volunteer." Sometimes we get a volunteer, sometimes we don't.
And can we make something else clear? You do not get paid.
I do not get paid.
Your family doesn't get paid.
No, my family does not get paid. And also, my family does not go to Aruba for two weeks on Little League. Just want to make that clear because yes, that was a reminder. My parents have been gone here for 28 years, and not one of those 28 years has literally paid for them to go to Aruba.
It's important that people know that.
No, I do it because I have two children who grew up in this borough. I was on one of the first teams at eight years old that brought softball to Bristol Borough with Evelyn Stevens, Eleanor Baker, Mr. Adamson, and my mother. Those were the first four coaches to start girl softball in Bristol. So I started at eight years old, and I've been here ever since, and my family's just a part of it. And it's good for the kids, and it's tradition.
It's Bristol.
Exactly, it's tradition.
I think you guys do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And I have no problem, and the Borough helps. And I mean, there are a lot of leagues in this, all of Bucks County, that you have to maintain your own fields and everything.
And we are truly blessed that we don't have to do that because I don't know who would do it.
We try to do it weekend, so I am 100% behind you.
Yeah, my question earlier was going to be what you answered, and that was...
Aruba?
No.
Get old school. And also, for the three years I've been president, I haven't gone.
Understanding of the expenses for those of us that don't have kids in Little League yet, or you know, you see what people write on Facebook, and I think it's good that you explained exactly what your expense is.
And another portion of that, where the uniforms are concerned, I know Croydon, we had just been told, the Bristol Township National, excuse me, it's not Croydon anymore, their boys are now being charged $250, okay? Morrisville is right around the same place, I believe, they're $225. When it comes time for All-Stars, all of those children who make All-Stars in those places, they have to buy their own uniforms. We don't ask children for another dime from the time that they sign up. We don't ask them to fundraise. We'll put it out there if you'd like to do it, but we don't require any of them to fundraise.
I mean, basically, it's free. If the parent wants to sell the tickets, it doesn't cost them anything.
Exactly. You just have to put that a little bit after.
And the other question, I mean, I didn't know that where you, I mean, I didn't know you were going to speak this evening, but I'm shocked that there are no leagues in this, in all of Bucks County for RBI Baseball.
None, and I have all the backup. I did my research, I just wanted everyone to understand.
So we would have to bring our kids, it's a more, like an inner-city type program.
It is, the program is set up, and it's my understanding from everything that I read, and I did reach out to RBI Baseball, I haven't gotten an email back yet, to give me complete breakdowns of everything. Like if we have 10 teams, what do you give us for those 10 teams? Beyond the shirt and hat. But the RBI program was set up with Major League Baseball, basically to go into inner cities. I don't consider us an inner city. I consider us a suburb, a growing, wonderful suburb. I don't consider us an inner city. It's also meant for inner cities that don't have an existing program. So they don't have a Little League set up in that area. They don't have a program set up in that area. They have nothing for those kids going on baseball or softball-wise. So that's what this program was developed for. I went through a lot of different records. Jimmy Rollins, who was, went on record, he lived in an inner-city area in Oakland, and he went on record saying RBI whatever, because the program didn't benefit his area or things that they needed. And he played through travel teams. And it also stated along with it that a lot of the inner-city kids are idolizing NFL players or NBA players. Baseball isn't just their thing. But again, we're not an inner city, we're a suburb of the city. It's just, it's a great distance to travel and...
I know for experience that there's a lot of kids that come to the field without a parent or anybody, they just, they come on their own.
They walk there.
Right. Thank God they can.
So I don't know how you would get kids to travel, even if it was to Croydon. I mean, you're not, or Levittown, I mean, they just can't get there.
Right, and we're...
They're coming by, you go watch a game, and you may have some parents in a stand, but you got a lot of kids that don't have parents even watching the game.
And we're blessed that coaches that do it for them.
I give them kids a lot of credit for doing a lot on their own. So I mean, it's the society we're in today.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Stacy? Tony?
Stacy, the only question I have again is one of these questions that people chatter about. Now, is there such as a Little League for profit? Or is there charter only a nonprofit charter?
From what I understand and what I've read through everything, and I'm not an expert, this is only year three, so I'm still learning, Little League is set up as a nonprofit. Now, you are allowed to keep money in the bank for things like 2015, which we weren't prepared for, when we had the girls travel. When those teams travel, that league is responsible for their meals, their travel expenses, their hotel rooms, their transportation. So we didn't know that at this point, and the further they got, the more scared we got. And thank God for the public in Bristol Borough because they covered all of that. So we've gotten a little smarter since then, and we're trying to budget ourselves better and make sure that everything we go along the way, we try and find a way to cover it. We also try and, if we do have money left in there, we're trying to find projects throughout the field, like the batting cages, the buildings being painted.
But that's not a for-profit.
No, none of it is for-profit.
I think what Tony's getting at is totally different.
No, none of it is for-profit.
It's still a nonprofit organization.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's all, because that's one of the things, I never heard of such a thing, that's why I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, as far as I know, no. Little League is set up as a nonprofit, and each division under it is set up as a nonprofit. So we have a main number and then individual numbers underneath.
Okay, thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you all.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave, did you need me?
No.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Jose Acevedo, Story of Bristol. I just want to talk about the Keep Bristol Beautiful cleanup event that we're going to have. The date for that would be Saturday, April 29th from 9:00 to 3:00. Sunday, April 30th, 9:00 to 3:00 also will be the rain day. Due to the docks being put in, we usually do our setup standard, but we're going to move it over to Grundy Park, and people can park at the Amtrak parking lot. And I think it's good because it'd give people an opportunity to be in that park. It's like a, almost like a hidden tool. There's not a lot of activity that goes there, but it's a really nice park. Hopefully, people can see that park for what it is, and maybe do some improvements down the road towards more family-ready, friendly. Looking forward to doing that. We supply the trash bags, gloves, safety vests, and pickup sticks. The residents, once again, they choose whatever area they feel like taken care of. We'll have the gateways entering Bristol, we usually have groups of people go out there, they can join in that effort also. These are the T-shirts. These were sold a couple weeks ago when we had the big celebration. It's a nice, usually we have Keep Bristol Beautiful T-shirt. We come up with a color, we have a standard shirt for that, but this is really nice. It'd be nice to see the whole town, all volunteers in that. You can purchase them at Great IDs by Ann. To order, just call her at 215-785-2350. You can just stop in her store. The cost is $12, and she ordered them by April 21st, a week before, I think would be okay. Last year, Comcast came in, we partnered with them. This year, we have a new business on Mill Street, Discover, Learn, and Grow Center on 420 Mill Street. And one of the employees there, the son of Ramona Jones, he went on Facebook and he posted the first annual Keep Bristol Beautiful cleanup event. So he didn't know we had three years of this already, so I gave him a call, I stopped over there, really nice guy. We joined together, we're going to have, so they're going to be partnering with raising a bar, Keep Bristol Beautiful. The guy's name is Marcellus Jones. He's going to be doing the flyers, he's reaching out to different businesses out of Bristol for sponsorship for refreshments. So it's great. They came into town, they opened up in October, and they're already being a part of fabric of Bristol already. So it's great to see that new business is coming town, to jump right in and become part of what makes Bristol great. And they're also one of six finalists for the Small Business Revolution. So that's about it. I also want to thank, on another note, yes?
Are you selling flowers? Are we selling flowers?
Oh, yes, we're also going to be selling flowers.
Where will that be?
We'll sell them right at the park, Grundy Park. Yeah, I talked to Jim already about that, so...
No, I just wanted you to say it.
Yeah, I just missed it. And we were up for last week, me and Sage, talking about the first variety and trying to control the traffic. So we met this week, and I want to thank Chief Henry, Chief Slack, and Merle Winslow. We're not going to have traffic crossing over Mill Street like we've had the last couple years. Whenever you have an event, safety's like the number one thing, no matter what. So I'm thankful for them to take care of that, and we should have a great event.
Thanks.
Thank you. Great idea.
Be careful tomorrow.
Thanks. Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Hey, that ends public participation. Just want to go over a couple things before we get into our, we have a couple other things. But first, so everybody knows, there's a major snowstorm that's supposed to hit. Hopefully, it doesn't, it does not hit. The mayor will explain, they had a meeting today, and go over its different procedures. So Joe Watt, you want to do that now?
Sure.
And then we'll come back to you, since we're on snow.
Yeah, as Mr. D Giuseppe pointed out, we had a meeting at 11 o'clock today with Merle, Emergency Management, Herb, Fire Company, Scott Bonner from the Rescue Squad, myself, and Fire Police, Mark Burton. Chief Henry was tied up, so I represented him also. The impending storm, Stella, and I hope you've all went out and got your bread and your milk and everything, so that in case we get snowed in for two or three days, you'll be okay. There's going to be fire crews in at least two of our stations, hopefully all four. There's going to be fire crews in at least two of our stations, hopefully all four, that will be manning the fire stations from about sometime later tonight through the snowstorm, so if there's any major events, they can respond right from the fire stations. Also too, the Rescue Squad has agreed to set up three ambulances exclusively to be running calls in Bristol Borough. Oh, George Waldron was also at that meeting today. George has agreed, consulting with the manager, that we're going to, the Rescue Squad's going to put one of their ambulances in our Borough Works Building, so that it'd be a lot easier for them to respond if we get a call, emergency medical call. Also too, the Fire Company will have EMTs on duty, and they're going to be responding for any call in the Borough with the squad. There'll be no parking on Mill Street from midnight tonight till 7:00 PM Tuesday. We've entered a declaration of disaster emergency, Mr. DeJesepe and I have signed, which enables the Emergency Management Coordinator to take whatever steps he needs to take to keep the Borough safe, keep the streets open, working along with the police. And also too, if we incur some major costs down the road by having this declaration, we might be able to recover some of the money that we spent. Let's see. We'll start plowing sometime tonight, all the equipment's ready to go. Just as another reminder, if you got your bread and milk, if you didn't check your smoke detectors at Christmas time, please check them now, make sure that you, they're working, change the batteries, charge your cellphones, your computers, just in case that we would have a power outage. I know that never happens in Bristol Borough, we don't lose our power. If you have a gas generator, make sure that that gas generator is not near your house, where, if you're working in your garage, away from the windows, the vent, you don't want to get overcome by carbon monoxide. Go right back to you.
Okay, just so everybody knows, the Borough has, you always hear me talk about equipment, but we have 10 trucks ready to go, we have 10 employees, so everybody has a truck. Six of the trucks also have salt spreaders on them, so we're able to get out there, take a section, and it's, with the help of Merle and everybody else, the town's broken down into different sections, so each driver knows which section he's in, where he's going, and what he's plowing. Now you got to remember, a long snowstorm, people can't stay up for 24 hours or more. So there's going to be a lag where some guys are going to have to go home and rest, and you're going to have maybe five trucks on the road. So when you start calling the boroughs, I didn't see a truck for an hour, you know, we're doing everything we can to make it safe. Then there's, there's other comments out there, well, why do we go out and plow during the night when, you know, everybody's sleeping? Well, the reason we go out during the night is because if somebody, God forbid, had a heart attack, or we needed a squad or a fire truck, you can't go out and, down a street with, you know, a foot of snow on the ground. So the reason they're out during the night, it's not that we want to spend money, it's that we need to keep our streets down to about three or four inches of snow, so that emergency vehicles can operate, police vehicles, rescue squads, fire trucks are pretty good in the snow, but even though it gets to a certain point, they have an issue. But our police and emergency respond teams need to get through, including firemen that are leaving their homes, to get to the fire stations to man a truck. So, this Borough is 100% on top of it, I know the chief is, Merle and the mayor, I have confidence in all our Borough employees that are working along. If something happens and we got to broadcast it, we'll be on the TV channel, but, you know, a lot of times they predict these kind of storms, and hopefully they're wrong again. I mean, you know, we're hearing anywhere up to 18, 19 inches. So I mean, that's what Merle was putting out a, an email today, saying that it could be a potential 18, 19 inch snowstorm. That's a lot of snow, in a small town, and when you're going down a street and you keep pushing and pushing the snow, it gets deeper on the sides next to the vehicle. So, give us a chance to do our job, give our guys a chance to go out there and do their job, and I don't see any reason why we won't be able to handle this like we did in the past. We have the equipment to do the job. The other thing is, there will be no trash collection tomorrow, so nobody needs to worry about putting trash out, that's already been canceled. The other thing has been canceled, and I'm sure all the kids are going to be excited, is the school, the Bristol Borough School District will be closed tomorrow.
The sham to...
So, all these teachers could have a day to relax tomorrow and enjoy shoveling snow. But there's no school tomorrow at Bristol High School, and St. Mark's has already been We were in executive session prior to coming out here this evening, discussing two issues, one was personnel, and one issue was dealing with our insurance company on another matter. And I think that's all I have for tonight. So, let's stay safe, and like Joe said, generators are very dangerous, keep them away from your home, defumes, carbon monoxide, it's odorless, and God forbid it, you know, it can kill somebody, it will kill somebody if it's kept in a closed area or getting in your home.
Ralph, if I just might for one second, I just want to, I want to thank Mayor Saxon for, you know, being at the wheel here, because your professionalism and leadership in situations like this really shines through, so thank you.
We need to deal with an issue with the developer, so I don't know who's representing, you want to do Stock first, or you want to do Fred first?
I'll do it.
Pardon me?
Hold that to the end. We may have to do... Number three. All the reports.
Student number threes.
Huh?
Student items, which number three?
Council minutes and all that stuff.
Okay. Hold that and go to four.
All right, number four on the agenda.
Is this...
What do you want to do?
We approve...
We're through one, Mayor's Communication, you have anything else, Joe?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a couple things. We're still getting a lot of accolades back from a lot of different people concerning the Small Business Revolution. I received in the mail today from Mayor Scott Long from the city of Wabash, Indiana, a cup, and a coffee cup, and just a letter, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just want to, this is the kind of thing that we're seeing. Good morning Mayor, I'd like to congratulate you on your victory in the Deluxe Small Business Revolution Season Two Online Voting. Your town is in for quite a ride with the folks from Deluxe and Flow Nonfiction. They are the most humble and down-to-earth group of people that I've had the pleasure to work with. Absorb the knowledge that they will offer and encourage all of your small businesses to participate, even those who are not specifically selected to receive services from Deluxe. Deluxe hosted a seminar with various staff presenting on many business practices that will benefit every business in your community, hopefully they will do the same in Bristol Borough, and that's what we're hoping. Also too, I received from him, if anybody would like to see these, they'll be on display in my office, Wabash County, which Wabash, the city is in Wabash County, is a booklet telling you all about Wabash. I also got from Red Wing Minnesota, our big competition. This is from Kristen Lynn. Hello everyone, just a note to say congratulations from here in Red Wing for being the Small Business Revolution Season Two Mill Street winner, Main Street winners. This one is from Bruce Larson. Sir, congratulations on the big win of the $500,000 Bristol Borough. Red Wing is a great place to live, as I'm sure Bristol Borough is also. With the population difference between the two towns, it's amazing how your community pulled together for the win. Kudos to you, sir, and your small town with a lot of pride. And that's just some of the congratulatory things that we're receiving. Let me see here, let's see. The Bristol Culture, I just want to let you know that the Bristol Cultural and Historical Foundation is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, and they do a lot for our town. One of their major events is Historic Bristol Day, the third Saturday in October. Also too, it's the Grundy Museum's 50th anniversary this year, they've got seven events planned for this year. One of the most recent ones was Thursday, March 9th, they held a Quizno Night, and there was a lot of questions about Bristol and the Grundy Mills. The next one will be Under the Glass of Victorian Obsession, which will be April 18th at the Library. John White Knight, who is a writer, will give a discussion about Victorian Obsession. And I think that is it. Oh, one other thing too, Councilman Pezza had mentioned to me, I mentioned in our work session about a traffic study that we did on Pond and, or Farragut Avenue and Monroe, and I guess there was, he's got a couple phone calls. I made the statement, there were 32,000 cars that went down that intersection. It wasn't in one day, it was in a five-day period, but there were actually 33,000 cars that went through that intersection in a five-day period, so, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Don't shovel any snow either.
The last thing, I got notes flying at me all over tonight, so, there's a meeting going on in the other room, that's what's the confusing part is right now, so, on number three, hold up on three, and hopefully this meeting ends before we approve that, the minutes and everything, it's the Harp stuff, there's a hard meeting going on right now. The other thing I want to bring everybody's attention is, we're fortunate enough finally to receive the check for the police and fire radios, which was a major accomplishment, that we were able to get a check, we received a check for $303,831. What that means is that the fire, the firemen and the police, instead of using their allocations that we have given them last year, when, or the year before February 31st, we raised the tax mileage, because they needed, the firemen needed money, and council approved the entire council, approved that tax increase, I think it was a couple mills, to help them out. That money now will stay with the fire company, instead of them getting this money and having to pay the radios in return. So, it's a big accomplishment that, you know, we were able to achieve, and again, it's $303,831 that went to pay. So Herbie, I don't know if you want to comment on that, or...
No, yeah, actually, yeah, this is great, it would have cost, it was going to cost out of the fire budget $39,100 for the next seven years. So that's all that money then will now be invested in the, in the fire companies themselves, and they'll be able to use that money.
Awesome, that's great.
Through service in the Borough.
Oh, keep you going, buddy.
Yes, it was great.
You're welcome. Okay, do you want to go to item number four, while we're waiting?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary final major subdivision land development and lot consolidation plan for the Mill Street Wharf Expansion Project on behalf of JVS Bristol Two LLC, for tax parcel 04-018-027 and 04-018-028, according to the plan submitted by Pickering, Quartz, and Somerson dated September 9th, 2016, consisting of sheets 1 through 9 of 9. Subject to the conditions set forth in the draft approval letter reviewed and approved by the applicant through their attorney on March 13th, 2017, said conditions to be incorporated herein.
Second by Mr. and Mrs. Cullen. Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Is this the consolidation of the wharf that we talked about, expanding the wharf, and what is this one?
Stocks property.
Oh, okay.
The Majors Building, and the one right next to it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I want to turn this over to our solicitor to have him explain what's going on.
I just want to explain what this is. Two years ago, I guess, JVS came in for land development for the, what we know is the Stocks Building, for the restaurant and the condos and the townhouses. Okay, this is what we're calling Phase Two. The owners of that property purchased the Majors Property, which is next to it, and they went to zoning and received some variances, and they've submitted this land development plan. And a couple things, what they're doing with the Majors Property is, the first floor, the Mill Street level will be part of the restaurant. So the restaurant's going to go from the Stocks Building into the Majors Building, and then there's going to be an outdoor deck in the back. The second floor, which is currently four apartments, will be converted to two condos, okay? So that's part of the, that's the land development part. Also, because they're the same uses, the two parcels are going to be consolidated, and the plan calls for the two buildings to be connected with, I think it's a glass, is it a glass walkway? So what's, what's on the agenda for tonight is the approval with, of course, a bunch of conditions, which I worked out with the attorney today, of this Phase Two project and the consolidation, okay? The Phase One, which this council approved a few years ago, there are still outstanding issues with that, so those are not going away, and we may discuss some of them. So whatever conditions are still outstanding, still have to be complied with, but hopefully this whole project's going to get done together. So you should be seeing some changes on the Majors Property as the Stocks Property is So that's what tonight's motion is for.
Alan, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. DeJesepe, and council members. Just for the council's edification, and my architect checked it out tonight, it was too far, and it would come with the storm coming. This is a rendering of just the Majors Building, showing the connector to the Stocks Property and the Majors Property. There was one feature on this, I don't know if everybody could see, there was proposed decorative piece of metal overhang, but it was discovered that this property fronts on the right away, so that would have violated the right away, and it's being removed. Okay? I don't know if everybody could see it, but that's basically how it looks.
Thank you. Alan, just so I can confirm, because we didn't, we didn't discuss it as part of the conditions today, and I'll put it in the letter, but, so the plan is going to be revised to remove that 1.5-foot overhang on the Majors Building, and you're going to replace it with some type of banding or decorative band that's going to be flush with the building.
That's correct.
So there no longer going to be an issue of whether that overhang enters into the pendant right away.
Then there will be no overhang now.
So the plans will be altered, and we'll put that as a condition.
Yes.
So, the problem is, the Borough couldn't approve that anyway, because it's something that we don't own to approve.
That's correct.
So I just want everybody at home, or whoever, or council to know, that we don't have jurisdiction over approving these overhangs or not, it's all...
Pendant issue.
It's all with pendots, so, I think council has worked tirelessly to make this project move as long as, quickly as possible, and we want to see it get done. There's just been a lot of issues, I think, and Joe was here, and said he fired architects, he fired people that were running the job, so I just want you to know that nothing is falling back on the Borough that we're holding this project up.
No, the Borough's been nothing but cooperative, and my client very much appreciates that, and the only reason this project is not done is based on some problems he had with prior professionals, nothing to do with the Borough.
I just wanted to get that out there, so everybody understands it. Is that it? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of resolution for Community Development Block Grant application to the amount of $460,000 to install handicap curb ramps on Otter, Buckley, Beaver, and Pond Streets.
Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Grundy Powerhouse Landscape Plan Revisions.
Second, second. Louis got the, Louis got the.
Actual motion. Oh, okay, go ahead, Louis, I'm sorry.
Motion to revise council's approval, a letter of February 9th, 2016, for the Powerhouse Parking Lot and Development Application for parcel 04013171001 as follows. The eight proposed Willow Oak Trees will be replaced with a black metal fence along the Washington Street at 50 feet and Canal Street at 130 feet, and with U bushes or similar bushes as approved by the borough. The proposed fence shall have a height not to exceed four feet, and the type, quality and color as proposed by the applicant and approved by the borough. And the security escrow relating to the installation of the trees will now relate to the installation of the fence.
Okay, now do I have a second? Second by Mr. Girard. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the closing of Mill Street for First Friday Events for 2017, May through September.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a donation to the Bristol Borough Learning Center in the amount of $10,000 per letter March 8th, 2017.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nine.
Do we have bids, do we have bids on this job already?
No, I'll read the motion. I don't know if anybody's.
Okay.
Thought you were going to ask, though.
Yeah, do you read it, though?
No.
Okay, yeah. I'd like to table motion number nine, until after speaking to our engineer, was gracious enough to give the borough a breakdown of the primary or the preliminary cost of doing it for it, so I think we're going to, you know, it'll be smart for us to wait and see if there's any money that comes available before we, you know, before we move forward with that project, so.
On the floor to table, we can discuss it afterwards. I don't think you even need a second, you just need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, if anybody wants to speak on that, just let me bring you up to date. We had, I mean, it's something that we didn't discuss, because you can't discuss it in executive session, but as Kurt was coming in out, different people was asking him information, and I know Mrs. Cullen is, you know, trying to get this done as much as Mr. Devine and all of council that met out there the other day. And after seeing the cost estimates, I think Mr. Devine said he has, he wants to table this and see if we can move in a different direction. I rang me to get a chance to talk to you, because you were at the doctor's with your son.
Daughter. I only have girls.
This doesn't, this doesn't mean we can't discuss this, and this could be on next month's agenda again.
Okay.
So, it's not a dead issue, it's not that we don't want to do it, we got to figure out where to get the money to do it. So, I guess they gave that job to me to try to find the money to get it done, but we'll figure this out. All right, I'm not going to adjourn the meeting, because we're waiting for this HARB. Should we take a recess?
Yeah, well, I would like to, I would like to mention something before we recess.
Got it.
Just about. I would like to tell the people of the borough, we lost a couple of great members, some special people on Elm Street, patriarch and pop-up Brodis Davis, who passed away also. This was a rough week for everybody. And then Catherine Ciati, who's a matriarch of, you know, Elm Street. And we're losing, not only the house, we're losing the great people that were on Elm Street. So, I mean, it's been a sad week, and then, you know, not to mention, of course, everybody feels the same way with Mr. Penelli passing, it was, it was crazy, and, you know, knowing his kids, and, you know, just, it was just heart-wrenching to hear that news, so that's it, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, just real quick, one of the things that I don't think a lot of people realize in town, and it's one of the reasons that the fire companies and the rescue squad work so close together, we have some people in town that rely on electricity for various medical needs, like heart machines and oxygen generating machines, and that's why the fire companies and the rescue squad have agreed to, you know, have staffing at the fire companies, bring that ambulance into town, so that if something happens, they can be there a lot quicker. And I think that just goes to the, you know, to the character and the fabric of the people that we have in our town, who are the volunteers in this town, whether it's the fire companies or, you know, the baseball league and everybody else involved. It's one of the reasons that we won the SBR, you know? People in this town care about people, and they come out to support them. So, I just wanted, when we were talking about that today, and there's, there's quite a few people in town that, if there's a power failure, it could be a major problem for them, and I just think it's great that the, you know, the police and the fire and emergency medical teams recognize that and go that extra mile. Thank you.
While we're waiting, Chief, why don't you update us on the dog issue with?
First, my apologies for not being here last week. You had a very active investigation going on, so it kind of took up a lot of manpower and staffing. I spoke with Vernon Nord, who was the dog owner for Bucks County. She's very cooperative, but I asked her if she'd like to stop by tonight, she respectfully had to decline because of other commitments. I know there's a lot of research done on this topic, it's been very aggressively enforced as we can as a borough. However, after speaking with her, there's a couple other different angles that we will be able to take approaches with, to the point where, since there's been prior convictions as a misdemeanor, excuse me, as a summary offense, now we can move up to possibly making it a misdemeanor at level three, which is very important, because it comes with a significant more fines and a possibility of even jail time. Having taken that to even to the next step, I was able, we really took apart the law about what we can do and what we can't do, because people really have a lot of rights when it comes to their animals. However, a couple of things that we're going to be addressing with this in particular individual is the event of licensing and the proof of rabies vaccinations. In the event we do come across these animals, we will be seizing them, and we'll be holding on to them until they are proven to have those type of licenses. Very pressing outlook with that, in other words. Myself and ACO Palmer went over there and spoke to her, the individual involved in this, at length, and pretty much laid out the law again, but I think this time, and I hope I'm not incorrect, that our message has been pretty much loud and clear, and I think we have a resolution in sight. Also, code enforcement, John Miller, has been very helpful with us also, going after other aspects regarding fencing and the landlord, so that's what we're at with it right now.
Thanks, Chief. The other thing is, I want to commend you and your department on this bank robbery that was, I know you worked very hard to try to get it resolved with county and the FBI and everybody, but.
Yeah, I would just like to also publicly thank, it was a great team effort by our guys, but there was actually some tactical components and some help during the investigation that we have to, the FBI was involved, Bucks County detectives, Benjalem Police Department, Falls Police Department, and of course Bristol Township Police Department, and Tully Town, and they were all very helpful in the quick resolution to the.
And I know the media did a great job putting out his picture all over the place, so.
Yeah, that's again the cooperative effort that we got. I mean, you have to, being a smaller police department, you really have to grasp a lot of other people's resources. FBI that we have a relationship with now came down right away, we used their public media people, and they got it out like that for us, so it was great.
Great.
I'm seeing if this is the HARB meeting, what's going on.
What is at the HARB meeting? What is it?
Something on there to be approved, that we can't approve the minutes if.
Can't approve everything else?
Then do that next, next move.
If we don't do it, does that mean they can't move forward with whatever they're trying to do?
We're going to have to explain it, because it wasn't in the packet. They approved this, proven, and when they come in, I have to explain what's.
So, you want to approve this?
Proven, except for the HARB.
Okay.
Why don't we get number three, we'll approve everything except the HARB report.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the council minutes for 1-9-17, 2-6-17, 3-6-17. I'd like to accept the treasurer's report for December 2016 and January 2017, accept the police and DJ's report for January and February of 2017, accept the fire and chief's report for January and February of 2016, accept the inspection department report for January and February of 2017, accept public works department report for January and February of 2017.
Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Rikio. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so everything's been approved. Do you want to explain that, or you want to wait for this?
Yeah, if we don't, I mean, if we don't get a decision for that, we're not going to decide.
Start a call on a recess. Could everybody just sit here and let me go find out what's going on?
There you go.
Look at that.
There you go.
It's like the white smoke or black smoke coming in, Ron.
I just have some. Hopefully. It says Harvard 103-17227. And looks like.
I think. I think.
I think. I'm not listening. Because you just don't know.
No.
No, I think they got it pretty good. It's great. That's great. I'm watching the meeting, it's going to think it's mute, like something's wrong with the sound.
Merle, so we're good for tomorrow? You're going to be in the building most of the time, or?
Yeah. I saw the meat bag. They changed the accumulation of gas. We can expect 13 now.
We can expect 13.
And a potential of 21.
So, Merle, so the latest report we're getting now is 13 inches to 21 inches.
Loan number seven.
Oh, loan number seven? That would be a lot better. It's still high, yeah.
Okay, so.
Could you close that?
All right, so in your packet, typically you'll get recommendations from HARB for the certificate of appropriateness, and usually the council approves it. They had a special meeting tonight because this contractor, this is 301-303 Ratcliffe Street, as you can see, it's taken a long time to get through this process, it's been months, and so the builder was granted a permit to just put up, well, he put the foundation in, of course, to put the deck and the framing in, but he couldn't do anything with the porch in the front till this was approved. So, after a lengthy two-and-a-half-hour meeting, they've come up with a recommendation to approve the certificate of appropriateness with some conditions, and if council approves it, the owner's going to have to meet the conditions, which I believe he's agreed to, except there's one more that have to work out. So, let me read this, if I may, because it's not in the packet. So, Mr. Murphy made the motion, which was approved for 303-1 Ratcliffe Street. Number one, that the railings in post, this is for the porch, white composite to match the 12-inch square columns that were approved on 11/28/16. The brand is Fibron White Composite. Okay. Shutters, approved two-panel raised style, recommended that the first-floor Mulberry Street side shutter should be wider to match the width of the double windows. The gutters that were submitted were approved. The first-floor porch design has been approved from drawings that were submitted this evening. It's going to be a hipped roof with brick color metal roof soffit, and the soffit will be white beadboard. So, that's different than what had been submitted before, apparently everybody's happy with that. The third-floor design, the, the design that was submitted was rejected, and they are conditioning this on a porch roof with columns on the third floor as opposed to it being open with the design to complement the architectural design of the first-floor porch. And then lastly, they recommend exterior mounted grills in all windows as true divided lights are simulated, understanding that they cannot require that, but they're recommending that the window dividers be either true or simulated as opposed to just interior. So, with those conditions, the HARB recommends approval of the motion, I mean, of the certificate of appropriateness, along with the other, the other ones in the, in the packet.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the HARB report and decisions for 130, 2017, 227, 2017, should I add today, say, 313, 2017, for 301 and 303 Ratcliffe Street.
Second by Miss Cullen. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Two questions. So, we're approving, but they're not finished over there yet, so are we going to get the amended version at our next meeting?
The only, the only two things turning up.
What do you mean amended version?
The part where you said they weren't approved for something.
They weren't finished or something, over there?
Yeah, I mean, if he submits it and it's approved, you'll have it in your packet for next one.
Okay, and then the second part of it, now, is this the same guy that came to the borough and he loved the borough, is he moving in, or is he just building? Do we know?
I've no idea, it's not something we're, it's not something we're entitled to ask, but I don't know.
No, I know, I mean, he was very excited and gung-ho when he came out, I wanted to see if he was still moving in.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I get a motion to adjourn. Mr. Rikio, second by Mr. Pezza.